All right, it is seven o'clock. We will call to order this meeting of the Wauwatosa School Board, and as is our custom, we will begin with a moment of silent reflection. Mrs. Galante, would you call the roll?
Mr. Croner?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Here.
Mrs. Randall?
Here.
Mr. Ray?
Here.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Mrs. Fee?
Here. We begin our meetings with an opportunity for public comment on non-agenda items. If there's anyone present who would like to make a comment on an item not on tonight's agenda, please approach the microphone and state your name and address prior to making your comment. Seeing none, we will move forward with the approval of the consent agenda. Are there items on the consent agenda which board members would like to remove for separate discussion or action? Mr. Meyer?
Yes, I'd like separate action on the expenses regarding Board Member Milfeld.
All right. Then with regards to the remainder of the consent agenda, is there any discussion? Excuse me, is there a motion for approval of the remainder of the consent agenda? Mrs. Randall, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion of the remainder of the consent agenda? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, Mrs. Galante, would you call the roll?
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes. We would then move to the removed item with regards to the recommendation for payment of expenses incurred by Mrs. Milfeld for attendance at various activities. Is there any board discussion? Mr. Meyer?
Yes, please, I have a comment. This is a difficult topic. All of us on the board love this school district. And we, all of us love the office we hold. And we all are just doing the best we can with what we know how to do. And with that in mind, we look at what we have to vote on, and the good thing and the bad thing about money is that it's pretty black and white. And this was an expenditure for, an expenditure for $845 for the convention registration, and $215.79 for one night of hotel room. And all of this was in good faith and honest, and there was an attempt to be frugal. However, it was done in violation of board policy. So, it's $1,000, and it was spent by a board member, and we're board members. And this vote is one of those votes that could come back in our faces later on. And over the course of the next two years, we will see, I believe, some of the most difficult times any of us have ever seen in this boardroom regarding finances. And we are going to need, I believe, to go to the taxpayers for money, and I believe we are going to need to go to the employees for concessions, or pay freezes, or various things like that. And I just can't help but believe that what we do here tonight on this vote is going to be held up to us as a test or a statement of our sincerity and our commitment when we ask for those things. And, so, to me, it comes down to, you know, do we do what's kind and maybe the right thing for Board Member Milfeld, or do we maintain what I think is our credibility going forward over the next two years? I believe if a vote for this, some will say it gives up our moral authority to go to the taxpayers and ask for money. Some would say it gives up our moral authority to go to the employees to ask for concessions, or pay freezes, or various other things. And in some senses, a vote for this, I believe, would look like a double standard, because some things get said to our employees in this boardroom that are less than kind regarding how hard they work, regarding the consequences of errors and mistakes when they're brought to the board to be corrected. And we can't be looking like it's one set of rules for board members and one set of rules for employees. And I know no one is asking for that, but I'm only saying that people who are reasonable thinkers could make that suggestion to us. Therefore, I have to vote no on this.
Is there any further board comment or discussion? Mr. Croner?
I, because a board member, fulfilling this job is difficult. Running a school district is very complicated. And one thing that we do as a board is we, we've made it a priority for teachers to have continuing education and further professional development so that they can do their jobs in an environment in which things are constantly changing. And I actually have to applaud Mrs. Milfeld for taking the time to go to a national meeting and try to learn more about what it takes to be a board member, because it is very complicated. And I think that if we're going to have a district philosophy of professional development for teachers, I think for board members that are trying to manage an $80 million operation and provide the best education for our kids, it's a pretty good thing that board members are willing to go to national meetings and learn enough to do their job. So, I will happily vote for the funds, and I think Mrs. Milfeld should be commended for going above and beyond to learn some more, to do her job.
Mr. Meyer?
I can give you an example right here now of connecting the dots on this. Not too many weeks ago, Dr. Erdl came to the board, hat in hand, and said that he had made a mistake on requesting pay increases for the non-represented, non-administrator contract employees. And he asked for an extra half percent, which amounted to, someone help me, exactly how much money was that?
Roughly $5,000.
Roughly $5,000 that would be spread out over 20 people. Some of those people were our technology team people, who had come to us this year and said they figured out how to save $200,000 on personal computer purchases. And, you know, one problem in this boardroom is we don't hold each other accountable. And I think that needs to change, because Mr. Croner, you were the one, one of the ones who voted against that, saying that what was done was done, and that if a mistake was made, people had to live with that. Now, it does look like you have two sets of standards here. Now, I know you to be a decent and honorable man, but I'm just saying that to the employees out there who came to us on their own initiative, and we wouldn't have known the difference if they hadn't come to us with those savings. And then, in that vote, we had two votes against it. One was Mr. Croner, one was Ms. Milfeld. And it just doesn't look consistent. It just doesn't look consistent that then we have a board member who goes and spends over $1,000 in violation of board policy, and oh, we're to applaud that. Well, I'm not trying to comment on anybody's intentions. I'm only saying that we lose our credibility when people hold those two things up together if those two actions by this board are not consistent.
Anything further? Mrs. Randall?
This is really, really, really difficult. It's catching up to us long after it occurred, which is a huge part of the problem for In addition to what Mr. Meyer is speaking of as far as compensating employees, I too find it really difficult to pay almost $1,100 for a conference and one night, you know, when it was such a struggle to get approval for the $5,500 and $5,000. And Sharon, I don't know what you were thinking here, you know, how you would weigh that. So, I was trying to think about this all week, because it's a really awkward position. But my bottom line, in addition to all that was said, is I don't think there's any way, shape, or form that that conference brought us over $1,100 worth of benefit to our district. I saw nothing tangible, nothing, you know, didn't create a new policy, a new practice, bring new information to help us along our way. So, if I were voting on this today, if the proper channels had been done and it was coming, you know, with the form, I would absolutely vote no on it.
Anything further? Mr. Ray?
I just would make the following observation. Coincidentally, we are, later on in this same meeting, going to be talking about revising the bylaw that impacts this type of expenditure. And the reason, I think, that we're revising it is because the way that it is currently worded, it could be clearer, especially in terms of when requests for information or requests to get authorization for expenditures is to come forward, it's not crystal clear. It doesn't always say if it should be beforehand or afterwards. And reading some of the language, you could suggest that, some of the language in the current bylaw does suggest that approval should be obtained ahead of time. But not, the very opening paragraph of the current bylaw on compensation is, in my mind, not quite so clear. So, I think it's appropriate that we're addressing the issue by considering, adding some language, and clarifying some of the ambiguity in the current bylaw. And what I'm trying to do as I'm considering this issue is realize that we're voting on this at a point in time before any change has been made to the bylaw, and we're looking at the bylaw as it existed back in the early part of 2010, and as exists at this moment, and not as it may exist after a vote that's going to be taken a little bit later this evening.
Mr. Meyer?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. The old policy says, well, no, I'm not sorry, expenses will be reimbursed only for activities authorized by the board. That's what the old policy says. Expenses will be reimbursed only for activities authorized by the board. If we as board members dodge and weave, and those words, and say, "Well, you know, that's not really so clear." How can we with a straight face expel a student who broke the rules, or refuse an employee grievance on some kind of technical issue? Come on, folks. It's just ridiculous to say that this is not clear. The reason why we're changing this is that we're needing to chase poor judgment. And we're trying to change the words in order to corral in the poor judgment. Now, I didn't say anything dishonest happened, or illegal, or anything. It is violation of board policy. But if we hold ourselves to this weak standard on interpretation of the meaning of these words, good luck over the next couple of years, trying to go to the community and to our employees with a straight face, with a credible story to give to them about how we manage this district.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Excuse me, please.
I'm sorry, I thought you were finished.
No, I believe this is a discussion about whether payment will be made on behalf of Mrs. Milfeld.
That's correct.
Isn't it illegal for her to be a part of this conversation, then?
It depends what she plans to say, I think.
Well, then, she's, please be advised that she's on very thin ice, or on very, you know, you know what I'm saying.
I believe that it would be appropriate for Mrs. Milfeld to make comments with regards to how this came before the board, but not on the substance.
Thank you. I do want to, taking myself out of this particular item, I do want to make a comment on the policy in general and our practices. And in fact, I did contact both the board president and the superintendent prior to registering for the National School Board Association Conference in Chicago. As a matter of fact, it was the superintendent who suggested that I look into it. I was very specific about the information that I was searching there. I also came back to the board with a report, and at that time, there wasn't any concern. We have had board members previously go to the Wisconsin School Board Association Conventions, the National School Board Association Conventions, and other meetings without this practice. However, I do respect what the board is saying tonight, and whatever the vote turns out to be, I, of course, will be abstaining from this vote, but I honor whatever the vote turns out to be. Thank you.
Is there any community comment?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Ray.
I do want to explain myself a bit further, because I do think that reasonable minds can differ in terms of how to interpret the current language in the policy. The very first paragraph of the policy reads, "Expenses of a board member shall be reimbursed when incurred in the performance of his or her duties," or, and I apologize, because my screen went blank for a second, "or in the performance of functions authorized by the board and duly vouchered." So, there is a category of expenditures under the current policy that doesn't necessarily require board authorization form if it's an expenditure associated with the performance of a board member in doing his or her duties. I don't know that it's completely clear if attending a national conference falls within that category. It may. Then, if we go down to the section of the policy or the bylaw that Mr. Meyer reads, and I agree, later on, it says, "Expenses will be reimbursed only for activities authorized by the board." But it's not clear about when that authorization form needs to be obtained. We will be considering adding language right at that spot in the bylaw to clarify whether or not that type of authorization form should be obtained before attending the meeting. But as of that moment, that clarifying language is not in there. And I believe that there are different ways to interpret the current language in the current bylaw, and I don't think it is quite as black and white as Mr. Meyer has suggested that it is.
Mrs. Randall?
John, I'm looking at 144, Part 1, letter F, in response to what you just said, where it says it voucher detailing the amount and nature of each expense must be submitted to the board for approval within 10 days after the expenses have been incurred. Did I, I thought you just said there was no reference to a timeframe?
Well, my question would be, how does that relate to the two different categories that are established in the very first paragraph of the bylaw, one of which does not require any board approval, and the other category which seems that it does require board approval? And I agree with you that paragraph F talks about things being, you need to submit something within 10 days under circumstance where board approval is necessary. But that doesn't answer my original question about how do you interpret the language in the very first paragraph of the bylaw? And that's why I think the bylaw in and of itself does need some clarification.
Anything further? Is there any community comment? Mrs. Randall?
I just have one more question. So, is the language we're putting in place later on tonight, is that addressing everything that we just talked about?
I believe the appropriate time for that will be under the discussion of that amendment. Is there anything further?
Are you looking for a separate motion to approve the same?
Ah, I'm sorry. Is there a motion to approve the portion of the consent agenda relating to reimbursement for attendance at the Wasbe Fall Regional Meetings in Peewaiki, and for the NSBA Conference in Chicago as outlined in the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Croner. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Is there any further discussion or community comment on this item? Mrs. Galante, would you call the roll?
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
No.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Abstain.
Mrs. Randall?
No.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
No.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes. We have a tie, and it does not, it fails.
Three Wauwatosa high school students, East Seniors Eric Islow and Avery Moore, and West Junior Jonathan Trippi, have completed all requirements, received National Boy Scouts of America approval, and have earned the rank of Eagle Scout. These Eagle Scout awards mark the 151st, 152nd, and 153rd, respectively, awarded by Boy Scout Troop 21 in 88 years of scouting in Wauwatosa. And if I just might add, I seem to read a lot of these. It would be nice sometime to have a representative of that troop here to talk about the work that they're doing.
Mrs. Weber?
The Wauwatosa School District's 2009-2010 Community Calendar has been named a Wisconsin School Public Relations Association, or WSPRA, Spectrum Awards winner of the Award of Excellence. The district was honored with the Spectrum Award during the 2010 President's Luncheon at the annual WSPRA Fall Conference on November 4th. The Spectrum Awards Program is a statewide program with, excuse me, for Wisconsin public education professionals involved in the writing and design of print and electronic materials and development of special projects. WSPRA is an affiliate of the National School Public Relations Association, or WSPRA. East High School Senior Catherine Gersten is one of five students chosen to take part in the Florentine Opera's 2010-11 High School Master Class Program. The Florentine Opera's High School Master Class is specifically designed to meet the needs of the gifted young singer interested in gaining knowledge and pursuing continued education in the vocal arts medium. Following an audition process, students are selected to receive private vocal coaching provided by the Florentine Opera. Master Class participants will have the opportunity in April to perform in a scenes showcase featuring the Florentine Opera's studio artists in residence. In addition to selecting students to participate in the High School Master Class, the Florentine Opera has also selected an additional five students to receive free private voice lessons. East High School freshman Christian Adams and Junior Winnie Lado were selected to receive free voice lessons.
Congratulations to each of these students and to the staff members who prepared the calendar.
Mrs. Lee, Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Please bring them.
Yes.
I would like to have it announced, who are the individuals who are mostly responsible for the community calendar?
Dr. Erdl?
I think Beth Lynn Scott is a parent that did a significant amount of work on that. Also, Laura Wayne Scott was involved with it. Beth Fredrickson, I believe, was involved with it, and Chris Breisler, Communications, and Cherry as well.
This is truly always a favorite of the community, and we don't always send to all members of the community, and I always get calls asking, "When is the calendar going to be out?" I didn't get mine. This is something is so extremely important to the Wauwatosa community. And then I'd like to comment very briefly on Catherine Gersten. She had a major role in Wauwatosa East's recent play, The Spelling Bee. I was just amazed at her voice and her, each one of, I think there were nine young people in the cast, and each one of them developed their character to just a beautiful performance. We are so blessed in Wauwatosa with our director, Mr. Thany, and our young people and the opportunities that they have. So, I commend each one of them.
Thank you, Mrs. Weber. That brings us now to our action items. We'll begin with Student Services. Mrs. Milfeld?
It is recommended that the school board approve the following regarding the principles upon which the administration recommends using for Chapter 220 and open enrollment decisions for the 2011-2012 school year, as presented and discussed at the November 8th board meeting. No seats available for new students through the Chapter 220 program. Item B, use a maximum class size of 18 students per class at K4 and K5, and 20 at grades 1 through 5. Item C, use a maximum class size of 23 in the core academic subjects at the secondary level, grades 6 through 12. Item D, admit continuing students, those currently on tuition waivers outside the space availability determined, using the class size guidelines of 18, 20, or 23 as stated above. Item E, maintain the current practice of accepting siblings of current students within available space determinations. Sibling applicants receive statutory preference in the lottery process. And I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Weber. Is there board discussion of this item? Mr. Croner?
I just have one question for clarification. On item C, use a maximum class size of 23 in the core academic subjects in secondary level, grades 6 through 12. Is that, do you use an average class size? Like, do you average, average class size for the middle school, and average class size for high school?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything further, board members? Mr. Ray?
Just to clarify, as we're reading through, I think it's pretty obvious that the sub-paragraphs A is the only one that relates to Chapter 220, and then B through E relate to open enrollment. Obviously, A clearly, in its own language, relates itself to Chapter 220. But just wondering if anybody feels that we need any clarification on that language, or if it's pretty self-evident that B through E relate specifically to open enrollment and not Chapter 220.
What reaction, response? I will say for myself that I believe that because those all fall under the heading, which includes open enrollment, that it is sufficiently explained that that, each of these pertains to open enrollment. I understand that one could include open enrollment as a phrase in each of those subsections, but I don't believe it necessary. Any further board comment?
Just one other comment that we will be bringing back recommendations at the next meeting regarding special education class sizes, as was recommended by the DPI. So, we'll have some recommendations for special education in relationship to open enrollment acceptance.
Mrs. Weber?
Could we briefly explain why we are capped out at 220, just for the public knowledge? Because we have been a very strong participant in Chapter 220.
Dr. Erdl, would you like that, or would Ms. Kwiatkowski prefer to respond?
Sure. For the Chapter 220 program, it's a program where, it's an integration program that encourages integration of minority students into suburban school districts, and it's based on your percent of students that are minority students. This past year in Wauwatosa, we were at 28% minority students. Once the school district hits 30%, they would become ineligible to accept new students into the Chapter 220 program. We anticipate that is going to happen, which explains why our recommendation is as it is.
Anything further, Mrs. Weber?
Thank you. We started, I believe, in 1976 with the open enrollment, so it's been a great program for Wauwatosa.
Correct. And I just want to clarify that our students that are currently here under Chapter 220, their status continues as a Chapter 220 student. They're not affected by the fact that we won't be accepting any new students.
Thank you. Anything further, board members? Is there any community comment on this item? Mrs. Galante, would you call the roll?
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
It is recommended that the school board approve engaging Pelco, Kane Energy Corporation to implement IP surveillance and access control solution at a cost not to exceed $992,000, as presented and discussed at the November 8th meeting. The approved 2010-11 budget includes district funds of $500,000 for this project, and $492,000 will be from federal funds through the COPS grant. And it is recommended that the school board approve the approval for meeting attendance and expense claim forms for board members, as was presented at the November 8th Board Meeting. And it is recommended that the school board approve revisions as follows to school board bylaws. 0144.1, compensation by adding to Item A, the phrase, quotation, "participation in the event/activity," and anticipated expenses must be approved prior to attending, using the approval for meeting attendance form." Close quote. 0175, association memberships, by adding Paragraph 3, quote, "Should an individual board member seek or be asked to serve on an outside school association, committee, or group, board approval is required prior to assuming the role." Close quote. 0175.1, conferences, conventions, and workshops, by adding a sentence to Paragraph 3, quote, "Expenses will be reimbursed in accordance with bylaw 0144.1." Close quote. And I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Weber. I would suggest that we take discussion of each of these items separately, beginning with Item 1, the video surveillance project. I would note that at the last meeting, during the course of the discussion, there was a request by board members for an executive session. It was determined that there was not a valid exception to the open meetings requirements, which would allow an executive session. Numerous documents were provided to board members and opportunities for questions. But that, I just wanted to, because that was on the last meeting record, I wanted to explain why there was no executive session with regards to this topic. And with that, is there board discussion of Item 1? Mrs. Weber?
The total grant of that is $992,000. The district is paying 500, and I would just like to have another statement made, because I think it's exceptional. There was a grant written, please help me if I say this incorrectly, Dr. Erdl, a member of the, one of the resource officers wrote a grant, and that is from, through the Police Department, and that grant was awarded to us. So that saved us another, that additional $500,000. Do I state that correctly?
That's correct.
And I really am most pleased and compliment the Police Department and that individual officer who stepped forward and did that. It's another reason why Wauwatosa is the district that it is, the community.
Brown.
Thank you. And he serves at Wauwatosa West High School.
Correct.
Thank you.
The board member comment? Mr. Kroner?
I had some reservations about this after the last meeting, simply because we received literally no information about this project at that meeting other than a slideshow. Subsequent to that, we did receive the grant proposal, and that was very helpful, and the request for proposal, which was very helpful. And I was able to meet today with Mr. Price, and Mr. Price to talk about the plan in more detail, and had many of my questions answered. And so I think it's a really good proposal. My concerns going into it, one, were not that we needed to have security in the buildings, because I think as a board member, my two biggest roles are, one, to provide the best education we can for the students in a fiscally responsible way, but to do it in buildings that are safe and secure. So unfortunately, times are such that we need to move ahead with a project like this. My concern was really more for privacy of the students. Who is going to have access to the tapes? Were people at access? Will we know who accessed the tapes and when? When would they get sent to the Police Department? Who in the Police Department would have access? None of that had been spelled out. And even though security is important, I think that when we get to a point where we're going to send information like that, pictures of students outside of our district, to me it's really important to know how that's going to be handled, you know, before we enter into something like this. So I did look at some of the architectural drawings, and I understand why the camera placements are where they are. I'm confident in the system that set up the storage and the security of the access. I do still have a concern about how we're going to develop policy for police and fire access in a crisis. And while you might say that's a no-brainer, that they have access, it seems to me that, you know, I want to be certain that no one at the Police Department or Fire Department has access to these tapes inappropriately. And we don't have those policies in place. And I guess, relevant to our earlier conversation, I guess, projects, especially of this magnitude for a million dollars, I would prefer to write the policy that governs the project and then pursue the project, rather than approve a project for a million dollars that isn't covered by our policy and then write the policy later. I assume this will be approved tonight, but this sort of goes against the grain of our earlier discussion of writing, doing things that policies don't cover. And I don't think we have current policies that cover sharing of information like this with outside agencies. So I hope that if this is approved, that we can move on that issue rather quickly so that we know how that's going to happen. I say that because if a policy were such that I wasn't comfortable that the privacy of students was, wasn't protected appropriately, or I didn't think efficient controls were in place, I might not approve a policy like, a proposal like this. I think that will occur eventually, but I just think in the future for these kinds of projects, we should, the board should be brought on earlier. We should address the policy questions first, and then go ahead with a project like this. Another comment I have is, is this is a hugely expensive project. It's a million-dollar project, and this grant was submitted by the Police Department, which I'm really grateful for, but I hope that we could address a policy in the future whereby if the district is going to enter into a collaborative agreement like this, that it be approved at the board level at the time that the grant is submitted. I was a little surprised that the first time that I saw this grant was, after this was presented to us, at the first time at the last meeting. So I think the officer that wrote this is a very talented person and did a great job, but I think at the time that this proposal was in the preparation process, I think the board committed to this. I feel like I'm again, and this is a good project, and it's a hard project to say this for, but I feel like, again, I've been put in potted plant mode, where the grant has been approved, $500,000 are coming to the district, and it's all in place, so we really don't have a choice except to vote yes. And I would rather be on board with something like this from the very beginning, and rather than feel like it's just given to me at the very end, it's something I need to approve. Other than that, my conversations today lead me to believe that it's a very good project. It's going to greatly improve the security in our buildings. The students are going to be safe, and I think it's a job well done by everyone. Thank you.
Mrs. Randall?
Just a little history, Mr. Kroner. Not too long ago, but I think before any of us were on the board, we lost the opportunity to get the school resource officers in our district because, I believe it was the board dragged their feet on approving the Police Department's desire to apply for a grant that would have paid for the school resource officers. And that, that resulted in a delay of several years in getting those officers in place. So, you know, we are getting our opportunity to learn about this, to approve it. I don't know that, how, how effective it would be for everybody who wants to apply for a grant to have to come in front of the board and get permission. So, you know, we obviously have to approve the projects that the money is received for, but that was, that was a big deal, and it was in the paper, and it was, it was a big deal. We lost out on quite a bit. The other thing is, I also, I agree with you, your question about who can view these, and actually, in the materials, and thank you, Mr. Price, for the materials you sent, I actually copied something in there that answered that for me, which says that the manage, in the RFP, I believe it was, the management system must contain delegated administration capabilities so that district personnel can be assigned rights to view live images and archive footage from specific camera groups while being exempt from viewing the same from others. So in other words, that's going to be built into the system. And I know that when we reviewed the Neola technology policy, Mr. Meyer, you may recall this, we talked a lot about who will have the responsibility for determining who that would be, and it's my understanding that resulted in the superintendent in those discussions. So I think that's all been talked about, and I think there's policy on that, and there also appears to be something built into the system. In other words, people would have rights to do that or not do it.
Yes, sir.
I don't believe it's on.
Yeah, that's correct. There are, there is delegated administrative capability within the system. So there'll be one data custodian that, under the direction of the superintendent, or whatever the policy is at the time, can assign rights to certain people to access certain areas, specific cameras, buildings, et cetera, while excluding them from, from others. And it could also include time of day, whatever, whatever, whatever other variables you want.
Thank you. Meyer?
I didn't want a surprise birthday party. However, for $992,000, nearly a million dollars, that's a surprise I can accept. And I think the idea that, you know, the board needs to be brought along is always a valid idea. And it's not a perfect world. People are working very hard to try to do what's best for this district. And I, for my thinking, for when I vote, I'd rather have these folks erring on the side of being too aggressive with these things. If anything, that leaves the board more time to sort out the usage policies, that this money is for hardware and installation and controlling software, probably. And so the idea that we would have spent a lot of time figuring out whether to approve the grant, would have, or the application, would have taken a lot of time away from any thinking we may wish to do regarding usage policies. So thank you to everyone who was involved with this.
Mrs. Weber?
Just a small addition. I was on the board when the first discussion came forward with resource officers. And the board had a good discussion, and at that time, it was not a majority vote to move forward. But let me tell you, I have never relaxed on that, and I felt it was important for the safety of our children, and I've constantly encouraged it. Finally, we have them in place, and we not only have one, we have three resource officers. And there is so much value in those gentlemen. So again, thank you to everyone who has proceeded with this. And Mary Jo, it's not a correction, it's just I had to add that.
I was going to ask if you were around, because I thought you were, yeah.
Is there any further discussion of Item 1?
Can I just add, regarding the policies, I think currently our policies do govern what's going to be put in place. The one thing that is going to be, need to be discussed by the board is the wording related to, and I think Mr. Price talked about it, that the superintendent, if you read in the policy, it's not real clear if the superintendent is allowed to provide access through administrative guidelines to other agencies, but I think, my belief is that that part of it needs to be brought back to the board and discussed with the board as well at a point in the future. So I think it's important to point out that that will be brought back, or brought to the board.
Mr. Ray?
And as, another observation, I mean, we're not going to be the first school district to have this type of technology in existence within the school district. So I'm sure that there are other school districts to go to, to look for examples about what type of written policies they have to address the use of their surveillance system that we could certainly draw from and gather a couple of different ideas from a couple of different sources. So I'm guessing that the, the action in order to review policies of that nature, to consider them, there will be some other examples to draw from. We don't necessarily have to reinvent the wheel on that issue.
That part is already underway, as well as Officer Brown researching other police departments and emergency services that have access in their policies.
Mr. Kroner?
I guess I would like to ask for a review of policies related to grant submissions in, at some future meeting, because I know that we do approve grants for charter schools and some other instances, and not in this situation. So I think, I mean, I, just by looking at a grant before it's approved doesn't mean you're against it. It just means you want to learn more about it before the district semi-obligates itself to a future program. So I strongly encourage people in the district to write as many grants as they'd like, but if they're for a significant amount of money and for a big program that the district is going to be obligated to in the future, I think it would be useful for the board to read the grant and say, yeah, we, we like this program, and we think you should go ahead and submit it. I don't think that's in any way inhibitory. That's what happens in pretty much every other organization in the world. So I think that would be consistent with good governance. But having said that, I mean, I, I did review this plan, and I reviewed all the materials. I think it's a solid plan, so I think it's going to be an improvement for our district.
Anything further on Item 1? Then we'll move to discussion of Item 2, Approval for Meeting Attendance and Expense Claim Forms. Is there any discussion of that item? Mr. Ray?
Can I just ask a question? We threw around a bunch of ideas at the last two meetings and raised a bunch of concerns, and then you and Dr. Erdl were sort of given the ultimate task of putting together a recommendation to bring back. Could you just share with us some of the discussions that you had and some of your thought processes? I mean, it looks like, basically, you've put together a form which follows a two-step procedure. The initial step is sort of an anticipated expenses submission that would be brought to everyone's attention, and then a follow-up procedure where actual expenditures would have to come back then for final approval.
That's correct. These two documents are actually unchanged from the last meeting. The comments that everyone had made in the request for changes were actually in the bylaw amendments, which is the next item that we'll discuss. But you're correct, this requires a board member to fill out the request for approval for meeting attendance ahead of time with the activity, the anticipated expenses, and then whether or not it would be approved by the board. Subsequent to that, the board member would have to, in accordance with the bylaws, within 10 days, fill out the expense claim voucher with the actual expenses. So this document is actually unchanged from what was presented at the last board meeting. The changes in the discussion was incorporated into the bylaws, which I can go into at the next step.
Okay.
Any further board member question or comment? All right, then we'll move on to the next one, which is the revision to the bylaws. I unfortunately did not bring all of my notes from the last meeting, but one of the items which was brought up was that we needed to have a dollar amount for pre-approval, and in reviewing the approval for meeting attendance, the dollar amount will be on that form. And basically, the language which is in this document now, under 144.1, requires all of them to come before the board. So there is no dollar limit. Basically, all requests will have to come before the board. So that's why there's not a specific dollar amount in there, because I believe that all of them will be required to come here. Secondly, there was a request that there be incorporation of bylaw 144.1 into 175.1, and that was included. And I don't believe there is any request for a change in the addition to section, to bylaw 175. That one remains the same. There was discussion at the last meeting with regards to removing encouraging national workshops. Opinions appeared to be split on that, so I did not remove that language. I think that there were two board members who thought that that might be, perhaps should be changed, and two members who spoke out in keeping it, so we left it as is. Obviously, any of these are subject to amendment at this meeting if there is a motion and a second for that change. Is there board member discussion? Mr. Kroner?
I just had one question for clarification. On 144.1, where it's participation in event
On 144.1, where it's participation in event slash activity and anticipated expenses must be approved prior to attending meetings, is that prior approval for attending meetings only necessary if you're going to be asking for reimbursement?
I don't believe so. Because of the, I don't know.
I guess my question is, if I want to go to a meeting, but I'm not asking for funds, do I still have to get board approval?
As long as you're simply an attendee, I don't believe you do. If you're going to be participating as a committee member or something of that nature, the amendment to 175 would require approval.
Okay, but, so the prior approval to attend a meeting is only if I want to get reimbursed for expenses?
That's how it reads, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Meyer?
My concern with the line of questioning is that visibility and prior collaboration is something that, as a board, we ought to encourage. And the more we have visibility and collaboration ahead of time and communication, there, the less we have need for more and more specific rules or regulations. It, it just seems that we avoid need from a lot of this down to the, you know, nth degree of detail, like this line of questioning here. You know, if, if we mutually respect each other's roles, that I only sit as one board member on a board of seven, and I have no authority by myself, therefore I should not be out in the world presenting myself as if I were speaking for the views of the Wauwatosis School Board. For example, this board right now, we've, we've learned from in-service meetings, takes a very dim view of board members writing letters to the newspaper. Well, that's because the, I gathered from the discussion, it presents one board member's view in a manner that suggests it may be the opinion of the entire board. So, you know, I, I start to get concerned when we start looking for exact details on, on what and where. We don't need those questions if we have the right attitude and culture of communication and collaboration. But, you know, so do we need to wordsmith this more to get it down to the fine detail of what nature of meeting does or does not need prior approval by the board? And, and I suppose then we could go to prior approval of the agenda items for those meetings. I mean, it could go on and on and on. And that tells me we're missing the point.
Mr. Kroner?
Mr. Meyer, I think you established the point earlier in the meeting. I mean, I asked that question because I don't want to go to a meeting in Milwaukee that I'm, that requires no expenses, that's an educational-related meeting, and then be called out at a board meeting saying I didn't follow board policy. So I'm just trying to find out if it's okay for me to attend a meeting on my own that's board-related without getting prior approval to the board. Now, earlier, you know, details mattered, so I'm just following details here. And if details matter, they matter in every situation.
Well, I suppose so. Details matter now. So let's, let's work on it. Perhaps you could discuss how every organization in the world does this, just like you informed us on the previous topic. Okay. But if, if, if we're going to lend ourselves out as experts on so many matters, then let's be consistent as well. And I just don't like the spirit of this conversation right now, that this was all about establishing a culture of accountability to each other and a culture of collaboration. And the nature of that kind of question suggests that there is an attempt to sidestep that while putting up words that suggest that you're not attempting to sidestep it. It just seems ingenuous to me, your line of conversation that you're pursuing here.
Mr. Kroner?
Could we just have clarification? Is this language intended to have every board member ask for permission to attend any meeting that they go to that's education-related? Is that the purpose of this? I, I can't tell from reading the language.
The title of the bylaw is compensation. I believe that it pertains to compensation, not to attendance.
Thank you.
Any for you, Mr. Ray?
I just want to throw an idea out there with respect to the very opening paragraph and
Of which, pardon?
Of, I'm sorry, 144.1.
Thank you.
The compensation bylaw. And my thought is, I'm just wondering if, if people think that this potential alternative language clarifies and assists and is consistent with some of the ideas that we've been talking about both tonight and previously as we've discussed this issue. But if you just read along with that first paragraph, and I'm going to, I'm going to suggest some alternative language, and you'll see where it comes in as, if you're reading along. "Expenses of a board member shall be reimbursed when incurred in the performance of his/her duties and when authorized by the board and duly vouchered." And that eliminates that phrase that's sort of in the middle, "or in the performance of functions," et cetera, et cetera. Seems to me that if we're going to get compensation for expenses, it would be for activities that were, we would be carrying out as a member of the board. And number two, if we include the language "and when authorized by the board," then it's clear that there's only one mechanism in place and one category, or one way to go about doing this. There are two separate categories of situations where compensation might be obtained. I think the language that I threw out there suggests that each time that expense, compensation is going to be requested, it has to be approved by the board. And there's no "or" situation in that introductory paragraph, which could be read to mean that there's two separate categories of expenses or compensation, one of which might not be required board approval.
Are you making a motion to
Not at this, not at this moment. I'm kind of curious to see if there's any, anyone else who feels that that would be clarifying or helpful, or if I'm just kind of alone in having that concern.
Mrs. Randall?
I agree.
Well, at this point, there is not a motion. So is there a discussion of other amendments? Or any further discussion on item three on the motion which is on the table? Mr. Meyer?
Well, just to put this in some perspective with some background, originally, in my phone calls with administration regarding what had happened with regards to this, my position was, if the board chooses to avoid a culture of accountability with respect to individual board members going off and representing themselves as, as speaking for the board without approval of the board as treasurer, that was difficult for me to do anything about. However, the money was a different matter. I could bring to the board policy proposals related to accountability for the money. Well, that seems to me to be a but I can't make us work together. So absolutely right, this, this, these writings were about the money, but that's all I could do. And because I can't force us all to work together.
Is there, is there anything further? I will just say that I believe that Mr. Ray's proposed language does clarify and simplifies the, that paragraph. And should such a motion be presented, I think it would be appropriate. Is there any further discussion of any of the items under the superintendent's motion?
Before we vote, I have a point of order clarification.
Yes.
I'm the one who initiated this motion. Can I also move to amend, or does someone else have to do that?
I believe you can move to amend your own motion.
All right. Then I would, I would move to amend that part of paragraph three that relates to section or to bylaw 144.1 to add an additional modification. And the modification would be in the second line of 144.1 to just cross out the words "or in the performance of functions." So we would eliminate those words. And then right before the words "and authorized," we would add the words "and when." The whole thing would read, that whole first paragraph would read, "Expenses of a board member shall be reimbursed when incurred in the performance of his/her duties and when authorized by the board and duly vouchered."
Does the board understand the motion as presented by Mr. Ray? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Randall. Is there any discussion of that motion? Is there any community comment? Then we will take a vote on the motion to amend the original motion to, so that the first sentence of bylaw 144.1 reads, "Expenses of a board member shall be reimbursed when incurred in the performance of his/her duties and when authorized by the board and duly vouchered." Mrs. Glonty, would you call the roll?
Mr. Kroner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes. Now, is there any further discussion of the motion as amended? Mrs. Milfeld?
Only just a general discussion comment, and that is, I'm glad we're discussing this policy. And sometimes until you have some specific examples, you can't go back and look at, well, is our policy language clear? How will we handle this? And the board in general could have, could have a change over time in the way they look at, at different policies or, and especially, I think, in this case. So I'm glad that the policy is being clarified, and that was my position when the changes were first being discussed by the board.
Is there any community comment on any of the items on the motion currently before the board? Ms. Glonty, would you call the roll?
Mr. Kroner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes. Before we move toward the second opportunity for public comment, I believe Dr. Erdl has a statement.
Excuse me. Just a reminder that an election will be held in the Wauwatosis School District. A three-year term beginning on the third Monday of April 2011. The present incumbent board members are seat number four, Mary Jo Randall, seat number five, John Ray, seat number six, Sharon Milfeld, and seat seven, Lois Weber. Nomination papers must indicate the numbered seat for which a candidate intends to run. If more than two candidates for any numbered seat file nomination papers, a primary election will be held on February 15, 2011. The first day candidates may circulate nomination papers is December 1, 2010, and the final day for filing nomination papers is January 4, 2011, at 5:00 p.m. Election forms may be downloaded from the Wisconsin State Elections Board website or picked up at the school district office.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ray?
Thank you. Dr. Erdl, I just wanted to take this opportunity to clarify, especially since the timing for starting to collect nomination signatures is coming up relatively soon on December 1st, that after a fair amount of thought and family discussion, I've decided that I'm not going to run in the spring election in 2011, so that seat five will not have an incumbent on the next, at the time of the next election.
Well, Mr. Ray, I'm sorry to hear that, but I appreciate your announcing so that others may have time to ponder how they wish to proceed. Yes?
I would just like to note that I will be running for seat four.
Is there any public comment on any item not on tonight's agenda? I believe a motion to adjourn is in order. So moved. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We stand adjourned. Thank you.
[inaudible]